If you will come to order, we do have a quorum tonight. Councilmember Schaffner is out of town and councilmember Kurtz is out of town. It is 7:00 PM and we are in session for our August 14th, 2018 regular council session. In just a moment, I'll ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an opening prayer by Town Attorney David Dodd and then remain standing as we say the pledges to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag will be led by Councilmember Greg Lamont. Please stand.
Please bow with me. Hey, Lord, thank you for the time you've given us here today and the abilities and the people that stand up and serve and the people that come in and speak and all the work that goes into these meetings. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge.
Go ahead. Get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Anyone wishing to speak up far during citizens' presentations? All right, seeing no one, we will then move on to our announcements and reports. Item number one, receive Town Manager class's update and provide input regarding the following: Fire Academy and Staffing. Tom?
Evening, Mayor and Council. The Fire Department will hold its inaugural Citizens' Fire Academy, begins September 6 and runs through October 4 of this year. It will be on Thursday nights from 7:00 to 9:00. It will be a great opportunity for our residents to experience the many tasks that are associated with the fire service here in Trophy Club. Participants in the academy will be fitted with firefighting protective clothing. They will have opportunities to participate in multiple exercises such as using the jaws of life to free a trapped accident victim. They'll climb the ladder truck. They'll receive some EMS training. Class members will also have the opportunity to tour a medical helicopter, speak with a flight crew, and most importantly, they will all participate in a live-fire training exercise that will culminate the academy on the 4th. I believe this is going to be a great opportunity for our residents to meet our Fire Department staff, the firefighters, and to get a better understanding of the training and the mindset that goes into becoming a firefighter. Also, Chief Carroll wanted me to personally invite council, should you so choose. We have three slots available if any of y'all would be interested in attending the Fire Academy. Again, it starts September 6 and runs through October 4.
Eric should probably get trained on the jaws of life.
Yeah.
It's Thursday.
Yeah, September 6 through October 4.
Oh, Thursday night football.
My kids, Bobcats, go Bobcats.
And then also with regard to staffing, I'm very pleased to announce the hiring of Mr. Marthin Athens as our new Parks Superintendent. Mr. Athens has extensive experience in municipal parks, municipal parks experience. He comes to Trophy Club from the city of Southlake where he's served for the past 15 years. Mr. Athens holds a bachelor's degree from the University of North Texas in Business Administration, is a certified Parks and Recreation Professional, as well as a licensed applicator and irrigator, and he will start with us on August 20. I'm also pleased to announce the hiring of Mr. Chris Lansey as the town's new Building Inspector. Mr. Lansey has over 14 years of municipal building inspection experience. Much of his time has been spent with the city of Denton. Mr. Lansey holds numerous Texas state certifications and is a licensed residential and commercial building inspector, a licensed plumbing inspector, and a licensed energy inspector, and he will start with us on September 4. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Council, anybody have any questions about the reports? Hearing none, we will move on to item number two. Receive Town Council Liaison Update. Discussion of same. Economic Development Corporation 4B, July 26 meeting, and the council liaison is Councilmember Rowe.
Yes, sir. It was a brief meeting, pretty standard business. Lisa gave a development update regarding Trophy Wood, and they discussed the upcoming budget for fiscal year 2019 and approved it as it was presented, which happens to be also how it's been previously presented to us. So, no changes to report to you guys from that standpoint, including the approval of a funding source for the parking lot out in front of HG. So, that was pretty much it.
Council, any questions of Mr. Rowe? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Council, at this time, I would like to pull item number seven. Does anybody else wish to pull an item? Seven is the proclamation. No one else seeking to pull an item? I then would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for items three through six.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items three through six.
Second?
A move by Councilmember Lamont, seconded by Councilmember Fleury. All in favor of approving items three through six? Show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. It does pass. Item number seven, consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town recognizing September 2018 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. That's proclamation 2018-11. At this time, I would recognize Alicia Fleury to read the proclamation.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number 2018-11. A proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, supporting the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and proclaiming September 2018 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Trophy Club, Texas, and providing an effective date. Whereas in the United States, an estimated 1,237,824 people are living with or in remission from leukemia, lymphoma, myeloma, or other form of blood cancer, with an estimated 171,550 new cases expected to be diagnosed in 2017. And whereas leukemia, lymphoma, myeloma, and other blood cancers will kill an estimated 58,320 people in the United States this year alone, and whereas Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, or LLS, exists to find cures and ensure access to treatments for blood cancer patients, and whereas LLS maintains an office in North Texas to help improve the quality of life for blood cancer patients and their families in the state of Texas, and whereas the state of Texas is similarly committed to the eradication of these diseases and supports the treatment of blood cancer patients and their families, and whereas Trophy Club resident Haley Geraci was recently diagnosed with leukemia, and blood donations can be given to Carter Blood Care in her name, and whereas the Town of Trophy Club encourages private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs that are saving lives, not someday, but today. Now therefore I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month. Section 1, the Town of Trophy Club joins with LLS in designating the month of September 2018 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month to educate its residents about the need for finding cures and creating access to treatments for all types of blood cancers. And Section 2 encourages its residents to get involved with LLS from participation in fundraising campaigns to making a donation or volunteering, and to fund lifesaving research to advance breakthrough therapies for blood cancer patients. Passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this 14th day of August 2018. I move to pass proclamation number 2018-11 as read.
A second.
And we have a second? Who seconded it? All right, Rowe seconded. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. It does pass. At this time, I know there are some guests that we have in the audience that are supporting Haley and have been supporting Haley since her diagnosis of her illness, along with her parents are here, and if anybody would like to speak on behalf of this, you're welcome to come to the microphone and speak. Anyone wish to say anything? All right. You didn't know you were going to be put on the spot, but then you might not have come if I told you I was going to put you on the spot. Come on. Pull that microphone toward you.
And Mayor and Council, just wanted to tell you, we appreciate this support, just this community's provided for us and our family. We've been overwhelmed about how the response now poured, and it just kind of goes to show just kind of what kind of town residents we have here, and can't say thank you enough just between jumping right into action and not only helping our daughter, but helping a lot of other kids that are out there that need this kind of, this type of treatment and blood drives and just everything that y'all have helped us make awareness. It's been very great. We've been very appreciative of it and just been very grateful and can't thank you all enough.
Thank you for coming tonight. So, at this time, I'm going to ask you to move back to the, my right, your left portion. We're going to take a picture by that seal back there if you would please. Council want to come?
We'll figure out how I accomplish this. Everybody somehow, and anybody else who wants to join. We got to share. So, let's stand here and we'll wait for everybody to somehow gather around it and kind of us turn so that we, who else can, everybody think of a break.
All right, ready? One, two, three. All right, ready?
I'm smiling.
I'm smiling.
I'm doing so much.
I don't see a shot.
Come on, one picture, one picture.
Come on in.
We're going to squeeze in everybody.
Act like you like.
No, you're thinking I'm going to be good.
All right, one, two, three.
Haley, you're smiling awesome.
One, two, three.
Haley, you're smiling awesome.
One, two, three.
Hi, Steve, we're all thinking about you, praying for you, and you're doing great. We're all behind you. We all support you so much, and I'd like you to be here with us.
I appreciate you.
All right.
We're all into technology here, okay?
Let's see if we can accomplish this.
All right, it is 7:14 and we will convene into a public hearing. Item eight, conduct a public hearing regarding the Trophy Club Crime, Control, and Prevention District CCPD budget for fiscal year 2018-2019 submitted to the Town Council by the CCPD Board. You have a copy of that? And do we have anybody that wishes to address the council at the public hearing? Seeing no one seeking to do so, we will then move on, and we will close the public hearing Moving into regular session, receive an update from Teague, Nolan, Perkins regarding capital improvement projects related to the Trophy Club Drive, Meadow Brook Lane, and Sundance Court project, and at this time, Tommy Uzi is going to take the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just here to introduce the speakers, which will be Philip Vargese and Tom Rutledge, representatives from Teague, Nolan, Perkins, to deliver the update on the CIP projects.
Thank you. Tom and Philip?
Thank you, Tommy. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to be here with you tonight. Just a little bit of background because I know we have a new council and a new administration. Back in May of 2016, the previous administration for the town and previous council had, at the recommendation of that administration, had approved the next round of CIP street projects for the town. So, we are under construction with the first of those that were approved back in May of 2016, which is Phoenix, and then we'll move into Indian Creek, and so that's under a current contract. As we have always done with this council is every time we have a next project, before we get too far down the road and bid the project, we first meet with staff to go over the scope and design and any challenges so we can get staff recommendations, and then come before you, as we are tonight, to present that to you and let you see where we're headed and kind of talk about a little, some things that we may want some input from council on, and then also just talk to you a little bit about the schedule and what that next project will look like schedule-wise. So, that's what I'm going to do here. So, this next round that we're in design with is the Trophy Club Drive southbound, which goes from Durango to Bobcat, and then there's Meadow Brook Drive, and then that is that section of Meadow Brook from 11 Meadow Brook to 23 Meadow Brook and then Sundance Court. So, those three streets are the ones that we're currently designing that will be going to construction soon, and like I said, I'll get with you here in a little bit. I'll show you what that schedule looks like. So, this is what this looks like on a town map. As you can see, when we look at this, Trophy Club Drive, which is the southbound or the westerly half of Trophy Club Drive, and then this one cul-de-sac Sundance Court, and then this segment here of Meadow Brook Drive. So, going into this, as you can see from the shaded portion where we are, we're here again on that western side, and we've kind of broke this up when you start over here at Durango. Where we started Durango on Trophy Club Drive, that's where we ended the project that was associated with the Roundabout. So, where that pavement stopped, this is where we're just picking it up. So, that project is not that far from us, and so we're picking it up there, and we're really not going into Durango. We've got brick pavers and everything in there, and all that's in good shape. So, essentially, we're going to go all the way down and remove and replace the pavement on the west side of Trophy Club Drive, really not doing, making any significant changes as far as grade. It's just essentially replacing the pavement. The one good thing about this as we get into it, we do not have a water line replacement that we have to work out through the mud, so the water line that's there is good. The mud's good with that, so that'll make this project go a lot cleaner. As we move to the north, then you can just see when we come, kind of zoom in there, that as we've highlighted here for you, this one segment of Trophy Club Drive currently does not have any sidewalks. So, that is a point that we want to try to get input from the council tonight, and you can see from where it says existing sidewalk there on the south side of Durango, that takes us back to the Roundabout. That ties back into that neighborhood, but this section along here has no sidewalks. And then as we continue to move to the north, you can see that as we remove that, removing that pavement there, again, there's no sidewalks until we tie into where there is sidewalk, which everything north of this, where this sidewalks ends, that's where the Highland, all the Highlands construction happened and sidewalks were required. So, that's why that sidewalk ended there. So, we have that gap in there, and we want to talk to you about that tonight as well as we look at that. And then you can see as you just continue on with the pavement replacement there and cross in the, in front of the church there before we get to Bobcat, that sidewalk's there, but we'll replace all the pavement right up to the crosswalk of Bobcat Church. So, when you kind of look at, Philip kind of helped put this together where we took some street views of what we have here, and this is just south of the church as you start to move south, moving the pavement there, that sidewalk would remain. We just replace this westerly half, and then you can see here in this street view where the sidewalk currently ends today. So, the challenge is, is that if we put sidewalks in, that all the trees have got to come out. And so, as you move through this, you can see where we have all the trees that march down through there. As we've met with staff and we've looked at it, there's just no way for us to be able to squeeze the sidewalk in and be able to keep the trees in there, and so as you can see, when we get into some of these where that space just gets really tight, and as you see, it's just, the trees are somewhat grouped together as you move south, and there are spaces where you don't have trees, but this is essentially what this looks like as you move south along Trophy Club Drive, and then when you get up to there where Durango is, you can see what that intersection looks like. So, that's the one thing that we'd like to talk to you about tonight and see what is some direction. I think that's correct about that, correct, Tommy, that we talked about that we'd like council direction on. The history has been, as it has been on Indian Creek and on other projects that we've had on the major arterials of the town, that we have put sidewalks in. So, if you, I'm open for any questions you might have on this part of that before we move on to the rest of the streets there, Mayor.
I had put in my name for questions, but I don't have it about the sidewalks. So, Ryland, you had put in your name?
Yes. So, do we know how many trees and what species?
We do. In there, what was our count, Philip? We kind of counted those, didn't we? What, how many?
Fifty trees.
Yeah.
And there's eight-inch to 12-inch elms.
Yeah.
And there's a couple of oaks and cedars.
Yeah. Okay, so mostly elms?
Mostly elms.
And a few of the others. Okay. So, Tom pointed out accurately that as we have done improvement projects over the past decade or so, main thoroughfares have gotten sidewalks, so this is interesting. So, I wanted to ask Greg a question since this is his backyard, not literally, but close, and he's dealt with this wall. Do those trees being there pose an issue when that wall is to become replaced anyway?
Yes.
So, the trees are?
I believe. I mean, we haven't gotten a final, but.
That was my question.
Trees are an issue.
The trees are already an issue?
And there are too many there to begin with because they're lumped in threes and they get big.
Okay.
So, they can be thinned out. That's my opinion.
Okay.
So. One thing I would say to that too, Ron, and as you talk, since you kind of brought in the wall and I meant to introduce that in this, so the, as we've worked through staff with this, one, from what we've heard recently, I guess some of that section of wall did tip over, and we also know that there's other segments along that wall that are a little bit tenuous. It is the intent that we would be putting into the contract documents that the contractor will brace the wall. We're not going to replace it as part of this CIP because it's not necessary for the street to be reconstructed, but that the responsibility for keeping that wall and the integrity of the wall in place would be he would come along in there and put bracing in there to secure the wall to make sure that nothing happened to that.
At a minimum, ensure that the condition stayed the same.
Exactly.
I know the HOA's been looking at potentially replacing it.
Correct.
At some point.
And what we always do with all the street projects with you guys is that there's two things that happen. One, we photograph and video that for record as we represent the town, and then we require the contractor to do it for his own benefit, and that's a requirement before he starts that. And so, we know that the, probably the biggest thing that'll happen along here is when they break up the pavement along there. They do use a drop hammer, and there is some vibration that occurs. It's typical where we've just completed the pavement on Phoenix. It's not unusual where they punch through that, but we don't anticipate that there will be anything that would compromise the structural integrity of the wall.
Right. My concern mainly is that I would, in a perfect world, want to see a sidewalk there for all the reasons we want sidewalks on our main thoroughfares, but knowing that those trees do create a bit of a buffer for the residents, but as Greg said, they're already a little bit problematic for the other things they're trying to accomplish there in the lakes, so maybe it's, maybe it's a moot point or mostly a moot point at this point anyway. My only other question isn't sidewalk-related, so I can hold it for later.
Go ahead if you want to. I don't know how far Tom was going.
Yeah, can we, can you go back to your slide that shows Durango real quick in Trophy Club Drive?
On the street view portion?
Nah, just the overview, the overhead view's fine. Do we have a potential option? We may not have enough room there. Do we have enough runway there to look at a right turn lane?
There's really not.
It's almost, yeah, that lot's too close, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. The parkway that's there from the curb to the wall in that section is somewhere around 10 to 12 feet, which that's a lane width in there.
But you don't have enough.
You wouldn't have the right of way to do that.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Thank you. All right, so one of the questions that I had in relation to trees, first reinforcing of the wall or ensuring its stability before, when you do construction, would you do, would you be doing something on the property owner's side of the wall, or would you only be doing that on the street side?
Only on the street side. And if I could make a point about that, Mayor, the typical section except when we, now that if we're going to put sidewalks in, there'll be the surface improvements required to remove the trees to prep it for the sidewalk. The construction of the pavement, the only, what we only need there is about two to three feet behind the curb to be able to get the concrete pavement in place, so we have plenty of room to do that heavier construction. Once that's done, then they'll do the sidewalk, which is mainly surface work, which would be able to keep us away from the wall.
So, I have some concern over removal of those trees, which are somewhat substantial that close to the wall, and the other side of it is I hate to remove the trees, partly because I think they add a buffer, sound barrier, beautification of the entire thoroughfare along there with the residents. So, from my perspective, I'd just soon not do a sidewalk and let the trees remain. That's just me personally. There's a sidewalk on the other side of the street. If people wanted to walk through that area, it just means they have to cross to do that. So, that's my opinion about that. We did have Councilmember Schaffner, who apparently has his iPad with him, who says he wants to speak, but I'm going to recognize him, and I hadn't heard him say anything, so I guess we'll move on. All right.
No, he, Greg clicked it. He's sitting in the wrong chair.
Oh, you did it?
Yeah. I thought you were just messing with him.
No, I, I thought Philip did it. It came up.
It, five and a half years, and it never changes.
Did you want to say something, Greg? Well, if you'd use your name, I'd know it.
Well, where's the IT guy?
Okay, now I know what the deal is. I thought Philip had it.
Just so we all know, the HOA has increased the dues, and that portion is dedicated to the wall. It was planned on starting it earlier this year, but with this happening, people, what's the point of starting a wall? Sure. And drop hammers or whatever you call it, just compromise.
Might as well do it after.
Some of the trees were coming out, and some may come out unintentionally when they build a wall, you know, just machinery or whatever hits it. So, maybe we should work with the HOA and to come, some kind of compromise as far as how many trees, or even new trees can come back in, but they're going to be compromised with the wall, between the wall and the sidewalk. We do have a sidewalk on the other side of the street, so what it would mean is that a person would cross over, go down that sidewalk, or just walk in the dirt, whatever.
All right. Any other questions? And you'll go on, Tom, if there are none.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
All right. Very good. Thank you. So, when we just get to the next street here, and that, I'm going to leave Trophy Club Drive because essentially that is really the main portions that we wanted to talk to you about on Trophy Club Drive was the sidewalk, the trees, and maintaining the integrity of the wall. I guess I could say that as far as the median's concerned, because we'll only be about two to three feet behind the curb on the median side, we'll just be going into that a little bit, replacing the, and come back and replace the sod, so there's really nothing that we anticipate doing there on that side. Then when we get to Meadow Brook Lane, so if, as you look to your right, this portion where we tie in over here that we do not have shaded, that's the portion of Meadow Brook that was reconstructed with a previous street project of when we did Indian Creek down there at Skyline, and so this was just the next phase of Meadow Brook that staff at the time had decided, and so this was identified to go on this segment of Meadow Brook and replace that, and then just turn into Greenleaf, and so this is just what that looks like in there. There's just sections along there that have been identified that were in distress.
All right, any other questions? And you'll go on Tom if there are none. All right, go ahead.
All right, very good, thank you. So when we just get to the next, uh, street here and that, I'm going to leave Trophy Club Drive because essentially that is really the main portions that we wanted to talk to you about on Trophy Club Drive was the, was the sidewalk, the trees and maintaining the integrity of the wall. I guess I could say that as far as the median's concerned, because we'll only be about two to three feet behind the curb on the median side, we'll just be going into that a little bit, replacing the, and come back and replace the sod. So there's really nothing that we anticipate doing, uh, there on that side. Then when we get to Meadowbrook Lane, so if, as you look to your right, uh, this, this portion where we tie in over here that, that we had, do not have shaded, that's the portion of Meadowbrook that was reconstructed with a previous street project of when we did Indian Creek, uh, down there at Skyline. And so, uh, this was just the next phase of Meadowbrook that staff, uh, at the time had decided. And so this was identified to go on this segment of Meadowbrook and replace that and then just turn into Greenleaf. And so this is just what that looks like in there. There's just sections along there that, that have been identified that were in distress. And so that's how the limits of Meadowbrook were determined to be removed and replaced. Certainly, uh, as with all the residential streets, when we get into these, we have to do things like remove and replace mailboxes, reset those and do some things in people's yards and, uh, any landscape or anything that we have in there. This segment of Meadowbrook and the next one, we will have water line replacement there. So we've already coordinated that with the mud. They're already aware of all of that. They've already funded that. And so, uh, that's all in place and is going to be part of, uh, the reconstruction of Meadowbrook. And so this is just to walk you through the street view of, of Meadowbrook. So before I go on to the next one, just pause here and see if there are any questions, uh, about, about Meadowbrook, what we're looking to do there.
Anybody have any questions on Meadowbrook? All right, go ahead.
Okay, and then Sundance Court, some very similar Sundance Court. We have water line replacement in that and it's just a full replacement there of, of Sundance. And as you can see, we've got quite a bit of stress, uh, distress and cracking in the cul-de-sac there. And so that's on, that's Sundance and so that's what that looked like. So there's no, any questions there on Sundance? We'll answer those for you. And then just taking it into for you, for a schedule, so we're here tonight. We're just giving you this update. The plan is, is that we'd let this to bid the first part of November. And then, uh, essentially by the time we open bids, we'd come back sometime in there on that December the 11th for council award of the contract with the idea of starting construction in January, first part of January of next year. And we just allowed for a year, we'll let the contractor bid that. We don't know if it's exactly a year of construction, but we've allowed for approximately one year of construction time. So that's, that's kind of the, the schedule that we would have on that work.
Ryland?
Yeah, um, can we go back real quick to just the, uh, over, overhead project map for the whole, um, Trophy Club Drive project? So, um.
You want the town map?
No, that's perfect, that's perfect. So what is your expectation for, um, the, oh, sorry, for the lifespan of a, of a street like this?
You, you mean when, when we reconstruct it?
Right, right, or one constructed to, to standards that aren't 1978.
Yeah, um, you know, in the industry, they always talk about a 20-year life, but that's 20-year life where you don't have to do anything. So there's no maintenance and which with concrete, there's very little maintenance usually involves, uh, resealing the joints that after a while need to be resealed. But we, we really typically expect you get 30 years out of, out of this before you see much of anything. A street like this where you get, uh, more of your heavier truck traffic, more of high volume of traffic, does take more, uh, load on it than a residential street. But, uh, 30 years is, is usually what you would expect out of that before you really do much. And then when you're doing that, then you're talking about maybe you're, uh, replacing, doing some miscellaneous panel replacement or something like that.
The reason I ask is a long time ago, when we were given a book that had all of our graded, our streets graded and it had dates on everything.
That's right.
Uh, the date on this ignored the fact that this stretch was constructed in three, in three sections. So can you tell me which of the three sections were constructed when? Do you guys have that data?
Not on me tonight, but we, we, we were the ones who initiated that study back in the 1990s where we did, uh, a great, we graded the streets.
Yeah, well, this was in 2015. This was internal to the department. So, so their data on when the streets were constructed.
Right, what, what happened was is that back in the 90s, we actually did through the whole town, we did a street, uh, valuation program where we took cores on the street to look at the pavement thickness and the subgrade. And then also look at the, the strength of that subgrade. And then to your point, uh, what the, how old they are.
Right.
And, uh, and then that, we hand that over to the staff that was here at the time and they kind of use their own criteria to develop that, I think is what you're talking about.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And so I don't know which of the dates are in here. I know that this section of Trophy Club Drive, it was built back in the 70s.
You should consult some historic aerials because as of January 1996, Trophy Club Drive only went to an area between Durango and Galloway. And then as of, uh, February 2001, it dead ended just past Meadow Ridge and it did not connect to Bobcat until sometime in late 2001. So.
You're talking about this section that we're looking to rebuild, right?
So my concern with this, with this street as it was graded by our staff three years ago was that about a third of this is 15 years old. So I'm really not sure, I'm not convinced that, that that northern third needs this.
So.
And I know you guys have done a lot of work on it, but this is the first we've discussed it really since that streets, uh, program came out, so.
Yeah, so what, what happened on with this section and, and the reason in getting in, into that and that back, back then when we, uh, this was discussed with the staff at the time and the council where this came up was if we were going to, this is really the last significant section of this portion of Trophy Club Drive, uh, that we have because we've got the portion just south of Durango to the roundabout. We've taken care of that. And then you take everything north of this, which is all new. And so we did have those discussions and that the decision was if we're going to be in here and do it, let's just go ahead and get it done. What we do know with the pavement section that's along, uh, here, it is a lesser section than our new standards. This, this section of, when we go back in with reconstruction will be eight inch thick concrete on eight inches of lime subgrade. What we're, what we found typically through here was everything was somewhere around six inches and the subgrade was questionable.
So do you have, but do you have, were samples taken from between Meadow Ridge and Bobcat? Because that's, that road is only at most seven years older than the other lane that we're not replacing.
Yeah.
So seven years is only 25% of the lifespan of a road.
Yeah.
So what, what I'm hearing is, and, and I remember, I mean, that, one of the reasons that it, one of the reasons that it's being replaced is that was when it was two lane, it was both lanes of traffic were there up until 2008, right? Um, so if one part was built in '01 and one part was built in '08, I'm more apt to replace the part built in '01 when I eventually have to replace the part that's built in '08. It just seems like we're taking on a pretty big chunk that we may not need to.
And that's certainly, uh, you guys' decision. We can always change direction, uh, on that. And, uh, I, I will tell you here, standing here, I can't tell you what we have in that section as far as the cores are concerned.
Yeah. Well, and it's a big delta because you're right, though the, the southern end of that is a lot different in both age and wear and tear and construction standards than the early 21st centuries.
So we can either, we can look to see what had been done or we can also look and take, take some cores in there if that's what we want to pause here and, and evaluate that. Certainly that's why we're here tonight is to make sure we're, you know, taking good direction from everybody.
All right, I have two questions. Uh, one dealt with, uh, from my perspective, I think we should examine that a little closer, Ryland. I think that's a good point to look at and to make an informed decision about whether or not to include that in that, in the project. Uh, the other thing that I want to comment is, um, this entire area was used extensively when the Highlands was built.
Correct.
And so any life expectancy was probably reduced just based on all the construction that went down those roads. Surely was stressed somewhat. I don't know if it deteriorated faster or if our observation was that or not. But I think it would be a good idea, Tom, to do a little bit more analysis for us, um, on that section. I think you're saying Meadowbrook to.
From Meadow Ridge to Bobcat.
Meadow Ridge, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
To Bobcat would be the section, but let's get some data and make sure it makes sense.
It actually, um, and you know, you guys will be able to look it up, but it, it actually dead ended at the end of the development at the property line there between Roseberry and Ridgewood. That was where the, the first extension dead ended. That was probably more like late 90s. But, but, but it actually, as of 1996, it's, that was built sometime between 96 and '01. And then everything north of the line there between Roseberry and Ridgewood was after '01, was probably late '01, give or take. Because it was there when I moved here in '02.
Okay.
So it's about somewhere in that range.
Yeah, the other part of my comment would be, I think it's a good suggestion, uh, that Greg said that said, let's look at what trees are already maybe being planned by the HOA to come out and have some of that data when we get ready to make this decision. And I'm not sure that trees would ever go back because you're not going to have a lot of space between the wall and the sidewalk. And if you put trees, they probably aren't going to be things that get very big. It's just, but it might be nice to have some of those plans if we're doing it. Uh, the last question I have is, uh, we've already issued the debt for this, correct? So, so these bonds have already been sold. We have the funds. We just have not started this project yet, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, Greg?
Jim Hayes, former mud director, just asked me to ask this question. How confident are we that the water and sewer lines are in the right of way and not under the street? Have we done any checking on that? They, they were surprised every so often they find that for whatever reason, they put them under the street.
Well, the only way you can, you know, as far as checking that is concerned, we haven't gone out there and physically dug up anything in that. But we have relied on, uh, the, the mud and the maps that they have and the record drawings that they have there. Based on the, uh, usually where you can tell where water lines are would be, uh, where the valves are located. And it does appear that the valves are located in the appropriate place. So the water line will be much deeper than any roadway construction would be. And so the mud's the one that's always had the criteria of, hey, we don't want to be under any pavement because if we have water line leak, then they have to fix the paving. But as far as us, if, you know, you're going to have water line crossing possibly these intersections, street intersections. But the water lines, uh, are typically four to five feet deep. And so we would not be into those lines when we do the roadway reconstruction.
All right, Ryland?
Yeah, um, I just want to make a, one final comment about, uh, the sidewalk. As, as I would like to see a sidewalk there in a perfect world. But obviously I don't want to disrupt the water situation there. So I'm in agreement with you guys about trying to get some more information on that and, um, try to come to some, come to some, um, decision there. But, um, yeah, in a perfect world, it would be great to be able to connect those sidewalks with the ones that are on either side of it, so.
Anybody else comments? Tom, anything else that you have?
Just, I guess the question is, how does the decision get made on two things that you guys have brought up? One is the, how do we get the information on the number of trees to be identified? Is that a strictly a HOA decision? Because this is in the public right of way and it is in the town. These are not, this is not, both these trees technically are not owned by the HOA. They are owned by the town or Trophy Club because they are in your right of way.
Okay.
So that's my first question, how that decision gets made and who makes that decision? So we, we make sure that we're taking good direction from the town. And then second, uh, how's the decision get made about the sidewalks? So we kind of know, I mean, I guess my thought is if we, somebody comes along here to say, we're going to rebuild this wall and we need to take out 90% of the trees, does that change anybody's decision about the sidewalk? Or what's the threshold by which we say, well, we're taking out so many trees, we might as well take them all out? And who's, who's driving that? So if you could kind of help me in that, that would.
I sure would do that. I, I didn't realize those were all in our space, so thank you for bringing that up. So it might be nice, uh, uh, we are not agenda to take action, so we will have to provide direction in another fashion to the town manager. So, um, uh, as I had said, I would prefer to leave the trees. But I said that when I felt like that decision was an HOA decision partly. So, um, I think at this point, I would probably say I would, I could go either way depending on what council decided. So anybody else want to make a comment about the trees? You need to make a comment.
Need full counsel here to make that decision.
All right, good point.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We can put that on a future agenda.
Yeah, there's a chance to have some sensitivity for homeowners backing up to it, so.
So let's do that for the next meeting. I think everybody will be here and we'll make the decision about the trees definitely.
Okay.
And then, um, what was the other issue?
Well, just the sidewalk, how that, what drives the sidewalk decision? Is it the trees or is it just, you know, it sounded like the trees were.
So I think Eric's point is well taken. Probably should have the entire council here to make that decision.
Okay.
So if we could get, if we have some data about that newer section that we can get in two weeks, great. If we don't have the data, we'll probably go on without it to make that decision for you.
All right, we'll work to get that so we can help you make an informed decision.
So the last thing I will bring up about all of this is our next agenda item deals with some traffic issues that we'll be addressing, which are partly in that same area.
That's correct.
And so to me, it makes sense that we make a decision about those traffic issues before we reconstruct the section of the road that's adjacent to it.
Correct, we were going to make that point about that as well with you guys. And, and again, as we go through that, if that needed to be, uh, some decisions related to that needed to be tabled as well for there's full counsel, that's fine. We're here just to give you a full update on that because I know Councilman Schaffner was really, had more, a lot of comments about that.
All right. Anybody else have comments or questions about this particular part of the agenda? All right, uh, Tom, any questions about direction?
No, sir.
All right, Tom, thank you very much. We'll work to try to get that done for our next council meeting to move it forward. All right, so let's move on to item 10. Receive an update from Teague Nolan Perkins and take appropriate action regarding traffic control for the following intersections. Bobcat Boulevard and Trophy Club Drive, Parkview Drive and Bobcat Boulevard, Durango Drive and Trophy Club Drive. So I assume you're doing the same during a presentation.
We are.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table till next meeting.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, uh, so we have had a motion to table by Jensen and a second by Roe. So the only discussion is on the appropriateness of table. And, uh, my only thought was it'd been nice to see some information before then, but we can just wait to, to the end. So that's.
More respecting his time because I didn't want him to have to come back and give the same presentation again to two council members. It's more of a respect for you, sir.
I appreciate that and we're here, it's your pleasure. I don't mind doing, we're, we're going to be back here again either way.
Right.
So it's just up to you guys. The only thing I could offer there, it's just like what we did. If you see something there that is not adequate for the next meeting, we're going to come back. We're more than happy to share that with you, but certainly we're here, it's your pleasure.
Okay.
While I still have the floor, um, can I, can I make a comment about, uh, to staff on this item? Or can we only discuss the appropriateness of the?
Tabling.
You're really just only supposed to discuss the appropriateness of tabling.
Okay.
But, uh, I think we can table it and then you can make a statement.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so Eric, you're finished?
Yes, sir.
All right, and so Greg, do you have a comment about tabling?
Yeah, the only question I have is are there any short-term fixes we need to look at now for school? Because school starts a couple of days.
No.
Well, could that matter?
Any problems?
Yeah, okay. All right, Ryland?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I support, given that I know, you know, before Eric brought it up, I know the, uh, the other guys that aren't here tonight, when we initially talked about this, had some interesting opinions and insights. And, and like Eric said, rather than make Tom go through it twice, so, yeah, I support.
All right, Alicia?
Can we talk about the short term? Greg just mentioned some short-term solutions until.
I, I really think that Greg was off point even when he said that because we really are a decision about tabling or not tabling. So how would you relate short-term to tabling or not tabling? I guess is the issue.
Can we talk about after we table?
I'll allow some comments.
Okay.
I saw Dave shaking his head.
Were you okay or not? Were you shaking yes or no?
I'll listen and see how far.
I know, we're, we're stretching it, but we'll try to make just comments. All right, we have a motion to table on the floor. All those in favor of table, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. I think everybody voted yes.
Yeah, that's right.
But appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to do it. Good to see everybody.
Maybe we, when we realized we didn't have two council members, we maybe should have delayed both of these, but I appreciate.
Nope, no problem.
It's good to get this information because we really, this is our first time to see some of it.
And, and I know a lot of that's in your packets already and give you a little time to be able to study that, so.
All right.
Good deal.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks both of you for coming. All right, so before I move on to the next item. All right, so before I move on to the next item, we are still on item 10. Anybody who can make a statement at this point or a question for clarification? And I think, Eric, didn't you have one?
No, I'm rethinking, it's not appropriate on the agenda item.
All right, so Greg, you had one, I thought?
No, I'll just repeat what I said. You said I was off topic.
Okay, that's fine. All right, Alicia?
I just wanted to bring up what we spoke of last time, some, there's just a short-term fix until we get beyond this part with the retraining or extra training of the crossing guards and their timing that we could do in the interim because school's about to start in a couple of weeks.
There would be no construction before the crossing guard anyway.
But I'm just saying, did we explore that further with the retraining until the construction to alleviate the school traffic during school hours?
Yeah, I believe, I believe the first time we had the discussion, I think the Chief Arada confirmed that they were going to work through that before we moved forward with the motion to deal with the, you know, engineering firm making this work.
Perfect, that was it.
All right.
Yep.
So make note of that, when we come to the next meeting, let's have at least addressed any training issues by the time we get there. All right, we'll try to move on to item 11. Receive an update from Republic Services and take appropriate action regarding an agreement for recycling services options and authorizing the mayor his designee to execute all necessary documents. Tom, are you going to say anything? Okay, go ahead.
I'm just here to introduce Jerry Harwell from Republic Services, who's going to be presenting to council.
All right, thank you, Jerry.
I, I, I think, we'll see. Mayor, council staff, I'm Jerry Harwell. I'm the municipal manager with Republic Services responsible for the Town or Trophy Club contract. Recently, we, the recycle industry has hit a major brick wall. And that major brick wall is that China is no longer accepting any recycling commodity from the United States. So that is a major wall for us, as it is for everybody that's in our industry. This is not a Republic Services issue. This is an issue across all companies and everybody that recycles in the United States. So I have a presentation. I, I'm not going to dwell on every slide. I'm going to kind of hit the highlights because you guys have a lot of long meetings and, and I know you've had this presentation and I've answered some questions that were sent to me. I'm sure those were shared with you as well, so I'll, I'll hit the highlights on this. And if I'm going too fast for you, let me know. Or if I need to speed it up, let me know that. So, really, we don't really need to talk about the, so the recycle, the life of a recycle, of recycle obviously is the consumption, the recycling, the collection, the processing, refinement, and then of course, the resale, the production, and how it comes back into the United States, how it left the United States. That's kind of the major issue with what's going on in China. So, trends in the market over the years, we've seen where corrugated cardboard was as much as $225 a ton, where it is today is probably about 70 to $75 a ton, depending upon the quality of that. And what that means is that you can have absolutely no mixed paper in that corrugated for us to be able to sell it. So that's one of the, the big things. Another thing is recycled glass. We are actually today having to pay $20 a ton to recycle it after we've spent $98 to process it, to get it ready to be sold. And what I mean by that is, we have to take every glass jar, bottle, strip it of all glues, paper, the little dots that they sometimes put on there. And we're having to basically take it down to refined sand again. And it's very expensive to do that. So that kind of gives you an idea of what, we're still able to recycle it, which that's a plus, but there is no value to it. If you look in the trends in material, I read the newspapers, multiple newspapers every day, but I do it all on my iPad. I don't have any papers that come to my house. All the recycling news, trash news, everything is done that way. If you look at some of the lighter weight, the, what we've done over the years with lightening the material, changing the way that it looks, a soup can is still a valuable thing, but a lot of the companies are going to the soup bags. Those are not recyclable at all because they've got, they've had food waste in them, so you can't even rinse those out and get all the grease and everything out of it. So there's been a huge trend change anyway, and then you add China to that as well. So in 2000, 48,000 plastic bottles equaled a ton, and 2015, 92,000. And I attribute that as a crunch, and that drives me crazy. You're sitting in a meeting around a conference table and everybody's, it, it drives me insane. I still like the Coke bottles that are solid and nobody can squeeze them and smash them and jiggle them around. So with, so in 2017, and because we do have a material recovery facility in Fort Worth that was built four years ago, with all of the latest technology, and we continue to update that every year. We thought in 2017, when all this information came out, that we would be safe and they would still accept clean material. However, that's not been the case. In 2018, they closed the doors, period. Nobody's recycling was coming in. The United States was 40,000, 40% of the commodity going over to China. So now that 40% is being pushed into domestic market, which means that the domestic market is going to become overrun at some point. Fortunately, today, we're able to keep it clean enough that we're not having a problem selling it domestically. There are some other companies that are having issues with that because their MRFs may be older and not have the process, the equipment. Some of our older MRFs, we've had to bring them up to date. So as, as you can see, we, the commodity market has been pretty volatile for a while, but not to the magnitude that it has been in 2017 and 18. So what it means is that we've had to add equipment, we're having to hand sort things that we didn't have to hand sort before. We've really had to clean up those loads. And then we're having to hold a lot of material at our facilities until some of the domestic locations are ready for it. Really and truly, if you take, when you started recycling multiple years ago, one of the things, it was always less expensive for us to collect it because we had the commodity that we sold to offset that cost. When you think about it, it's the same truck, type of truck, it's the same person, type of person, or persons. In Trophy Club, it's persons because we have helpers on the back of the truck to dump the, it's not automated system. So we don't really have that going for us that we had before. So I think as, as recycling is, is taking this, this road, in the future, you're going to see that your trash collection and your recycle collection are two different issues. And then you, you've got an oper, the cities will have an opportunity to either be a partner in the commodity, so if we get paid, you get paid type thing. Or you can assume all of the risk on that and just pay the difference, or you can give us all of the risk and pay a little bit higher pricing. And that's kind of the direction that it, that we see that it's going to go. And that was that explained in layman's terms. So long-term, what we're looking to do is a lot of public education. We are working with a couple of other cities right now to do recycle education videos that you'll be able to, to share on Facebook, however, you know, if you've got a TV channel on your website, however you want to do that. Because this is, this is industry. This is not Trophy Club. It's not Hirsch. It's, I mean, this is recycle education. We're going to start working with some of the schools to get back in and, and do some recycle education. So we'll continue to reassess the exception of, the accepted materials that we can take. There are a lot of markets that have cut out glass completely because they don't have an outlet for them. We continue to have an outlet for glass. We're not looking to cut anything out of the recycling today because if you cut it out of recycle, it goes to the landfill. You fill up your landfill space, then when we run out of landfill space, then you, you've got a twofold problem. You don't have anything to do with the recycling, you don't have anything to do with the trash. So our goal is to continue to work with the domestic partners and, and continue to recycle everything that we recycle today. Will there come a time that we could have to remove some things from the stream? Absolutely. But that's been all along, and that's why it was in your agreement that we had the option to be able to come in and ask for that. So our next steps are, so there's, there's twofold. I'd like to work with, with staff to do some education. I'd like to do some recycle education when we do our next fall event where we're taking HHW and, and stuff like that and, and kind of work on other ways that they can recycle some things. And then you always get to the part where you have to ask for money, which is never my favorite thing to do. Because you have a contract, and I, and I do understand that. The good news is, well, the good news for me is that in your contract, there is, there, I am allowed to come in and ask you every year for an increase based on our cost going up. And the good news for you is that I haven't done that every year, as the contracts allowed us to do. Because we did talk about this in the very beginning. The only increase that has been through this new contract is when council voted, not this council, council voted to go from a 6% franchise fee to a 12%. So all we did was pass that additional 6% onto the residents. So if you look at the rates that we have today, 12% of that goes back to the town, and so that makes our fees even lower. So we did a calculation based on the tonnage that you currently recycle and the number of people that do recycle, and what we're getting back. And it comes out to $1.20 more for the recycling. That would help Republic Services just break even on your recycle program. So instead of coming in here and asking you for an increase on your trash and an increase on your recycle, we're asking you to give us an increase on the recycling that would hold us until the end of your contract to allow us to negotiate something that works for both sides.
When's the end of the contract?
2020.
21, 20, 20, yes, the end of 20. And so what that, that also does, it's, it doesn't, that makes it to where that when you are renegotiating a new contract, because the, the bad thing about Trophy Club's next contract is that we've used all the industrial from all the building to keep the residence rate lower, and we're not going to have that moving into the next contract. And it's already gone, it's cut by about 60%, 65% already. And as you build out, then that'll all go away. You will add some commercial in there that will help to offset it a little bit, but it won't be anything like the industrial. I will tell you that our HHW and e-waste costs have more than doubled. So with those two events a year, we've, we've had added costs there as well. So when we get to it, then there, there's going to be a little bit of a difference in the way that the previous contract was negotiated in your next one. So this kind of helps stair-step it a little bit to where we get a little bit closer to where we need to be.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Jerry? Did anybody want to go over any of the detail of the spreadsheets? All right, so the only thing I will bring us to is page 104 of the packet, which is net processing value change model for annual rate review Trophy Club. So here's where it gives us an analysis to show the $1.20. Tom, and maybe Jerry maybe answer it. Assuming there was a $1.20 increase in recycle, is there now going to be a franchise on top of that, or is 12% coming out of that?
Well, 12% would come out of that because I, I mean, the, the bottom line is, when I do anything with your rates, I include the franchise fee in there. So it's not $1.20 plus another 12%. Because honestly, if they told me to come in here and do that, I'd have to make that $1.20 lower or something because I just can't do that either, so.
All right.
But no, it is just a flat $1.20 increase.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jerry. So Tom, I think what you're looking for is council action as to related to the request to do the $1.20 increase on recycle.
That's correct.
Is that right? And assuming we approve that, when will that be effective?
I'd like for it to be effective as soon as we can do it, but obviously, we couldn't do it any sooner than September the 1st. But if we needed to push it to October the 1st to be able to notify residents or, or whatever we needed to do, we could certainly do that. But I, I would prefer September 1st, but.
All right, council, any discussion or action? Ryland?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to approve the rate change as requested by Republic.
Do you have a second?
Second, amending it to October 1st?
Yeah, sorry about that.
All right, so Ryland, are you okay with it being October 1st?
Yes, sir.
All right, I am going to, but I'm just getting that in one motion. So we have a motion and a second by Jensen to approve the rate increase of $1.20 to make it effective October 1. Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I'll just say real quick, since we have a motion on the floor and speak to it, you know, Jerry netted out what the, what the increase is per user per month, and it's not, it's not egregious at this point. They have worked with us in the past to kind of keep things smooth for residents in terms of rates and things of that nature. I would encourage staff to look into the potential options in the future of waiting for a new contract or if they're, and understanding what the potential terms could be in two years. Because one thing I don't want to do is surprise people. So if, if there's an opportunity to amend the current one to try and smooth any changes or make things be not as drastic of a change between a current contract and a future, that's just something I would like for us at least have a conversation about. You guys always worked, have always worked with us on these things, and as far as I know, folks seem to be pretty satisfied with the service you provide. So I would just recommend that we continue to talk over the next little while here, year or so, that way, you know, everybody knows what's coming.
Well, and I think that's one of the things about working with Mr. Klass, and, and when I came in and we sat down and we talked, we talked about the fact that we know it's coming, and so we need to start looking and, and working towards that, so, so there are no surprises. And it also gives the town the opportunity to, if you feel like you need to go out for bid, then you've got that opportunity. So absolutely, I would like to start doing it next year, so.
All right, Greg?
Just for the record, when this came up, I was on council. I voted against it, not for rates, but we did not send it out for bid, and I thought that was important. The town manager said that was not necessary, so I just want to make that record. But I will support this based on the presentation and the current reality of the world as we see it.
Thank you.
All right, and so I just wanted to comment that I support Ryland's suggestion. And so I just wanted to comment that I support Ryland's suggestion to begin to look at the future. I think we would have a lot of citizens put back if all of a sudden we had a huge increase in the trash figure. And maybe we'll see what happens in the market as time goes on. Anybody else before we call for the vote? Seeing no one seeking the floor. We have a motion and a second to approve the $1.20 rate increase and making it effective October 1. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Jerry, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 12. Discussion and provide direction to town staff regarding the replacement of playground equipment at Harmony Park, the addition of one shade structure at community pool, and revised color selections for the two shade structures at Harmony Park. Tony, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just want to provide a quick update on our last park board meeting on July 16, 2018. One of the items was to discuss and provide recommendation on replacing the large playground at Harmony Park with an accessible playground. I did provide a quote for, for the playground of $235,000 and $817, I'm sorry. I didn't want to make a note that I applied for a grant with no obligations, which $27,000 was granted. So the new total of that accessible playground is now 208, approximately $208,000. So I just wanted to provide that for you. The current playground is, was built in 1998. And the majority of those components are, are no longer manufactured. So it makes it really hard for us to replace them if they are damaged or vandalized or anything of that nature. So I guess tonight what I'm asking is seeking council's direction on, on, on this item before I move on to the next.
All right. So I have a question and then Eric. My question was, based on the footprint that we saw in the slides, how much bigger or smaller is that than the current one you're replacing?
It's, it's a little bit larger than the, than the current one. This one, this new one would measure at 70 by, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, this is, yes, this is the, this is the new shade, the new playground right here. This is 70 by 65.
So are you saying that's 20% bigger?
It's approximately 15 to 20% bigger.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. That was my question. So Eric?
So my suggestion was an accessible playground.
Correct.
I don't see that being shown to me in this presentation. What in that picture is accessible?
It does have a ramp for the.
Where's it at? So what I'm gonna, I don't see anything in the present, unless you could find something here.
Yes, it's over, it's, it's to the right. It's with the green sides.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I need more, I need a better presentation.
Okay.
Okay. I need to, I need to see a little closer, closer up. So you're saying there's a ramp here just to, that a wheelchair could go on?
Correct.
Okay. And all I see then is the ramp continues, continues, continues. Again, that's not, to me, that's not what I'm looking for as an accessible playground. We need equipment that a child, adult can remain in a wheelchair and participate. Is that here?
And that's the case there, yes. That is the case. It does come with 16 accessible activities.
I don't see it on the screen. You can help me out, Tony.
Okay.
I don't see it.
What, they would enter through the ramp off the trail of Harmony Park. It, it does provide with 16 accessible activities, which, which 20 of those are elevated and 20 are ground level. So any, any child can play.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking for, I need, I need more detail. I'd like more, I'd like more close-ups of what we're looking at. I definitely couldn't vote to approve any spending of money until I got that. And I'm also, part of it is giving suggestions. I think something like this, we need to, we need to look out for support, funding support from the community, from businesses. See if we can get somebody to sponsor something, you know. I'd just kind of like to kick around some ideas to, to make a big, a big splash with this.
Okay. I do want to add also is that the quote, there's rubber surfacing that includes in the, in the quote as well. So just wanted to include that. And with this quote, the shade structure would also be replaced. It's, it's also included.
Thanks, Tony. That's all I got, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Ryland.
Okay. So is the shade structure, the actually, the frame, is it due for replacement?
No, sir. That's.
So my recommendation would be that we attempt to find a footprint that can fit under the existing frame of the shade structure so that we don't have to replace it. One thing I don't do here is get rid of things that are working. I agree with what Eric said about trying to under, better understand some of the accessibility options. We should, maybe we should sync with Parks Board. I know when we did this at the toddler section of Harmony Park, there were some outreach to some folks that had kids that would be using it. And they actually participated in some of the process. I just want to confirm that, that something similar has been done in this case, just to make sure we get some feedback. Because you can't replicate having been in their shoes.
And just, just to, you know, it has been.
They were, okay, cool.
Yes, we have reached out and.
Okay, good.
They showed up to the park board.
Yeah. The, the footprint thing though, again, because I mean, the, the shade structures, they, they aren't cheap. And in a minute, we're going to talk about one at the pool. And we always need shade at the pool. So I hate to take something that's working and, well, it's just not the right size anymore. When I have areas where I don't have shade, that I need shade. So yeah, and then as far as the other items, I'm always in favor of shade at the pool. I, I see the need for it every time I'm out there. I'd, I'd like to talk about funding when we get to that point. I'm not crazy about, again, getting rid of a working shade fabric just because it's the wrong color. I mean, Tim has been the guy that said we need to have a consistent vision and a consistent aesthetic, and I agree. But that doesn't mean that we just don't use it anymore. I know in this case, it would be repurposed. So maybe it'd be a net, it'd be a net wash and it wouldn't matter. But let's just make sure that we're all on the same page on that one.
Yeah, it was never our intention to get rid of any kind of shade structure fabric that.
Right. It's just a swap over to.
Right, we were going to repurpose that.
Yeah.
Tony, let me just make sure that I'm clear, though. My understanding was this shade str, the straight shade structure here, we were going to keep. You're saying that we're going to need to expand that?
No, that, no, excuse me, no, we would keep this shade structure.
Right. This is, this would be just a replacement. What we're proposing would be just a replacement of the fabric that's been destroyed as part of the insurance settlement.
Not the frame.
Now, we would, now, but the, the other point to this was this would be an appropriate time to potentially look at. And that's what we're seeking direction on, changing the color of the fabric that we have to buy new. And if we were to go with the proposed tan, hunter green concept that the Parks Board was looking for.
Correct.
We would have to paint that.
Sure. Yeah. No, so I'd asked about the frame initially. So I thought you were saying that the frame needed.
Frame is staying.
All right, cool. Yes, so then we're good there.
Alicia?
Starting with the accessible playground, I know Ms. Lundey and others did meet with you and were pretty happy with the selections that you guys found and made. And I know these pictures don't really show as well, but just pulling it up on Google, you can see there's a lot more detail of the, the special needs and the accessibility and the, with the wheelchairs and the slides and the different activities around. So maybe to what Eric was saying, just maybe some better examples that you can just pull off the internet to better represent, because it's very, it's a flat image that's really hard to visualize.
Right.
Like I can see now in a, in a, in a regular photograph on the internet that gives a lot more detail to it. And yeah, I totally understand about the shade structure, about going with the standard tan and green. Just painting that, I think you're doing that in-house at a big savings. Now, your bid came down tens of thousands of dollars for the actual shade. So that was great. And repurposing the other smaller blue one to the pool, which we always need shade at the pool. So I thought that was a great idea as well. So not changing frames, just painting the frames and replacing the shades as necessary and repurposing them. So it's not wasting anything. So thanks for everything you've done. That's great.
All right. Anybody else have any comments? I think at this point, unless someone wants to make a motion to refer it to a future meeting, it will just come back when we've got more information available to us. Without taking action unless somebody wants to take action. As I am understanding, there seem to be, we want a little more detail in pictures. And maybe explore some options in the funding area of sponsorships or something like that. That would be direction, I guess, to staff. Is that, am I clear?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
People agree with that?
Yep.
So we can't break it up and we get started on the shades part of it?
We're just doing A.
Well, if you take the shade off, then it's going to be unshaded and it would go to the pool. And the pool's going to be closed now.
Well, it's fine, but what about replacing? We already have the insurance to replace the, that's not shaded now going ahead. And can we go ahead and prove that to get started?
We're looking for a direction, if you, if you look, we're looking for a direction, four different bits of direction. I think we understand the first with the accessibility, the accessible structure. We're also looking for direction on replacing the destroyed shade structure, shade fabric, which we would do in the tan and then paint the.
On this particular structure?
Right. And that would be to replace the shade fabric $2,300. So we're looking for direction on that. And then we're also looking for direction on potentially spending the $19,000 for the new shade fabric to match what would be for the smaller Harmony Park structure. That we would use the blue fabric to repurpose later. And then lastly, just direction on potentially installing the new shade structure at the pool where the repurposed fabric would go.
Okay. So this is really, this is really to me, three items.
Alicia, were you finished?
Oh, I'm sorry. You said four.
Yes. So my, my suggestion was that the things that we agree on, let's go ahead and provide direction and get started on those. And we can discuss the remaining items at a later date.
All right. Ryland?
Yeah, I would say C and D are one item. We need to address them as one. I mean, if we, if we, we need to decide if we're going to do D before we want to do C, obviously, because they're tied together. So I, I would recommend, I want to hear about how we intend to pay for that. Because we're not talking about it in our current budget and it's not budgeted. I'm sorry, we're not talking about it in our current budget we're working on for next year. And it's not in our current budget we're operating out of. So all that being said, if we need to do business tonight for this, then I'll make a motion to direct staff to move forward with the replacement of the destroyed fabric and using the, the color that they have, that they have determined to move forward with, with what we're doing. I mean, I, you know what, scratch that. I don't understand why I'm being asked to make a motion about an insurance claim, guys. I mean, something got torn up in a storm, we're going to replace it. Like, why am I making a motion? So I'm just going to sit back and let y'all sort it out.
All right. Greg?
Any time limit on the grant money?
I'm sorry?
The grant money, the $27,000, any time limit?
And that's just reduced from the quote.
Is there a time limit? Who's giving us the grant? And do they have a time limit on December 31st, 2019?
I, I applied for it last week and it was, it was granted this week. So it's, it's reduced, it's how it works, it's reduced from the, the quote itself.
Okay, that's not what I'm asking. In other words, is the grant money, is there a time limit on it? December 31st, 2018, December 31st?
As far as using it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, one year. It's one year.
Okay. Do we go off a bid on this?
There, no, sir. They're with the buy board. They're with the buy board.
Are there other companies that do this?
Yes, sir. And I did, I did ask for one more quote and they did provide it. And it was, this was the, the less expensive one.
Okay, so we did go off a bid?
Yes, sir. I did, I did, yes, yes.
We'd be able to see on both. For, to your point, that's, we want to see those quotes.
Sure.
And the other thing is if we install the fabric before we install the playground, is there going to be any damage where they're bringing it in, with the, whatever they, how they bring it in? Any damage to the, the covering? They're trying to install it?
No, sir. I asked that question, no.
All right. So let me clarify that I'm understanding correctly. Based on Ryland's comment, we can move forward with no action to utilize insurance funds to replace the tarp. And the, are we going to need a balance of something to do that?
$2,300?
$2,300.
$2,300.
It states in the.
And is that accessible in your current budget?
Yes, sir.
All right. So to Ryland's point, I don't know that we need to take any action. You just move forward with that. And you're changing the color unless anybody has an objection to changing the color, which there's none. Is that, did that?
Yes, that's, that's been our intention all along. The, the issue that I think we would like direction on, if you look at the recommendations that we made, when it comes to the $19,000 to purchase the shade structure fabric to match that that we have to replace at Harmony Park, we can utilize FY '18 savings that we have based on salary savings and whatnot from the Parks budget to begin with. We can cover that. We're just looking for direction. If that's a direction that you'd like us to take. And then when it comes to the $66,000 for the pool shade structure that we would repurpose the fabric on, we have a remaining $41,919 from a 2010 tax note that we would put towards that.
All right. Ryland?
Cover the majority of that cost.
Sorry. Ryland?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm having trouble understanding why all the, all, all these years when I've, when we've had items, you know, they, they've been brought to us in a, in a structured fashion to add things to the pool or to add things to the park. And so I guess I'm just, I'm having trouble with the timing of the new shade structure at the pool. And, and well, then my next question to Tom is, what have we been sourcing from that, that tax note for up to this point? Then what were those funds previously intended to be used for? Because, I mean, I just, I feel like we're, I feel like I'm watching a shell game happen right now with this, with these, with this funding here. And even though I support adding a shade structure, I got to know that I feel good about how we're paying for it. That's why I really, I'm, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if I'm ready to make a decision on that tonight since we're in the middle of a budget season.
Yeah. Councilmember Rowe, we're, we're, we're just asking for a direction. We're not asking for any council action other than provide us some direction. I can assure you, this isn't a shell game.
Well, maybe that's not, I'm, that's not an accusatory term. It's just a, you know, I mean, I like to know where things, where money's coming from. We usually cover that in the process of building a budget. I do support the shade structure doing that, assuming I'm cool with where we're, how we're paying for it. I do want to hopefully see one there one day.
All right. Alicia?
The, the timing unfortunately was due to the storm destroying the main shade structure. That's why that's being replaced.
No.
And there, the forethought is thinking ahead into the future and planning is if we want things to be standard and to match, we've, we were trying to, I think they're trying to plan what to do with the remaining blue structure instead of proposing that they just scrap the whole thing and put a matching structure there, moving that over to the pool where there's shade needed and repurposing it and therefore being able to match the shade to, you know, to the, the replacement shade from the insurance.
Yeah, but your cart, your cart's before your horse.
But, right. But the timing, I'm speaking as to the timing, why now? Why we're doing this now? Well, the storm was a couple of months ago.
Right. But the storm doesn't have anything to do with shade at the pool. And the fact that we all of a sudden think it does is why it's making this difficult for people to understand.
Well, I think it was, you know, my, my thinking is thinking outside of the box, what to do? How can we save money in the future? How can we repurpose things and recycle things instead of just?
No one's proposing throwing it away. Who said we're going to throw away something that works? Why are we doing that?
No one. They're just thinking for, this is a future thing. If we go ahead and change it to the tan and green, whenever you guys want to, whenever you give direction to, later on, they'll move forward. This will be the next step, replacing the blue with the same color scheme and repurposing it.
Greg?
Just check with the, review the tape on the P and Z meeting. The church made a presentation about shade structures and that, a new type system, how they tie it down so that it doesn't have this situation where a strong wind are going to come, come along and take it out. Just, just preview, which is.
Okay.
See if it's, I hope it's similar type thing, because they said it's fairly new design.
We're just looking for direction, just to, just to. We're just looking for direction, just to, just to clarify just for a second. The large shade structure, the fabric was damaged with, due to the storm. At our park board meeting, we asked recommendation, for recommendation on changing the color from tan, from blue to tan and hunter green posts. And so, we also discussed not leaving the smaller shade structure of blue color and then having another tan color next to it. So unanimously, they agreed to, you know, recommending changing this one as well with potentially some cost savings on using this smaller shade structure and transferring it over to the pool. That's how the pool came about.
So let me ask a question. The two structures really could be handled separately. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
One of the issues, which is the $2,300, which is B, right?
That's correct.
And that's a total separate issue that deals with the fact of we had a destruction of shade structure. With the insurance money, we can buy a new one and change color and paint the poles and that issue's gone.
Yes, sir.
Has nothing to do with the pool.
Correct, sir.
The other issue is C, which is buy a new shades, new color of shade structure for that particular facility, move the one that's there to the pool, but that would be the $19,000 item.
Correct.
19 plus 66, because you don't have anywhere to put it at the pool.
Okay.
Because it would be a net new. That was why I was saying that.
But to your, yeah, and I, I understand where you're going with.
Our park board started with something that blew out of the air and then they said, well, let's take something that's barely two years old and replace it too. Well, now, let's spend 20K on something that already deserves its purpose. Well, now we got this 20K sitting here that we just wasted, now let's spend another 66, so we have something to put the 20 that we just spent.
The, the genesis behind the $19,000, we, we can separate the $19,000 from the 66. The genesis behind replacing the small shade fabric at Harmony Park if we're going to change out the large shade fabric to a different color, the genesis really is based upon several complaints that we've had in that area from residents who frankly don't like the blue, okay, and would like to see a more neutral color. And then to avoid what will ultimately be the, the next complaint, which is now we have a tan shade structure with hunter green poles next to a blue shade structure in a park that's not desirable. Again, the $19,000 can be separated from the 66 insofar as, to your point, which is we can save and repurpose that at some other point in time, we can keep it.
All right, so I'd never finished. So, let me just finish while I have the floor and then Alicia and Greg have asked for the floor. I would move that we direct staff to move forward with item B by replacing the damaged shade structure and using existing funds to do so.
I will.
All right, so, I think Ryland's second, but I don't know who did it first. All right. All right, that item is before us. Any discussion on that item? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to clear the board for speakers. Anybody want to speak on this item? Hearing none?
What was it, sorry?
Uh, item B, which is saying, replace the damaged shade material, use the insurance money and spend an additional $2,300 bucks.
And in-house painting.
The tan and the green scheme.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, we're not painting that in-house, that's contracted out, but the price isn't included though, as well.
All right, everybody clear? Alicia, do you still have a question about that motion?
With the tan shade and the green, yeah, I think the direction was, do we want to do this color in the, in the planning of eventually changing the color of the other one, I think that's the direction they're trying to get.
That's what we're doing, at least that's what I'm intending.
Right, but.
Move forward, replace it with tan.
There was a question on that, yeah, that's the whole.
When we get ready to do the next thing.
I don't think they're trying to get it approved right now for the 19 and the 66, but you've got to keep that in mind before you can move forward with this color scheme, you've got to know what you're doing in the future.
All right, Ryland?
Um, I'm going to go out on a limb on this one, let's see, it's 2018. Okay, so I've known Tim Kurtz for four and a half years, I'm going to speak for him. Have a plan for what your color scheme's going to be and execute it and don't ask us what color something needs to be every time you go to do the project.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second before us. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to direct staff to move forward with item B, show your hands. All opposed, same sign of did unanimous, it does pass. All right, council, you're back still on item 12. There's been some direction that looks like we want more information about what the new playground looks like to make sure we see that it addresses the issues of accessibility and seemed like there was something else that somebody wanted. Oh, looking for sponsors that you recommend.
Oh, yeah, Eric was asking about creativity funding.
And there, did you have something too? Nope, I've said my piece. Okay, so, I think we've given some direction here, I don't think anybody wants to make a motion, if they do, they need to get the floor to, oh, Alicia, I'm sorry.
Talking about section A, we're, we're telling them they can choose colors and paint scheme and shade fabric because they have the resources and the wherewithal to do that, but when they've researched and found an accessible playground that meets the requirements, it's, it's kind of, which is that, do you want them to take things and run with it or do you not?
They haven't shown me accessibility yet, so I'm, I for one cannot vote to approve it.
Now, you want to make a motion if you choose to do so to move it forward and we vote, but no one's done anything about a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that they move forward with the accessible playground.
Do I have a second? All right, motion dies for lack of a second. All right. Does anybody else wish to deal with item 12? Hearing no, no one speak or someone requests to speak, we will then move on to item 13. Discussion, take appropriate action regarding the fiscal year 2019 budget. And Jonathan, are you going to present or begin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're excited to bring to you a glimpse of the upcoming fiscal year 2019 budget. This presentation was provided to the Council Finance Subcommittee last week and, and council has seen the majority of this information, piece by piece, so this is the, our, us compiling the information and presenting it in a little more concise fashion. So, I'm going to ask our budget manager, John Zagorski, to come up and present to you the, the presentation tonight. Just keep in mind that our main goals here are, we're, we're looking at still providing property tax relief through the use of the special revenue funds, maintaining that 11 cent interest and sinking rate, and then looking at establishing that capital equipment replacement fund that I know that council like to do. So, we're going to also talk about the phase three of trophy wood development, so turn it over to John.
Thank you, John.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So the FY 19, 19 budget, I promise you, it'll be no easier than a shade structure. All right, so as Jonathan spoke a little bit earlier, these are our goals and these are the budget goals that we set out at the beginning of this year, maintaining is to provide property tax relief using our special revenue funds, it's always good if we don't have to have to the property tax rate every time we need to do something. So utilizing those special revenue sources which the state has limited control over, or limited how much control we have over. Maintaining a level debt service, right, and you'll see that our debt service is staying on track and it has nice stair step drops. Establishing capital equipment replacement fund and providing funding sources and true up sources for that. And then preparing for a phase through the trophy wood development, you'll see that through our hotel occupancy fund. So right now, I'd like to go into the general fund, this is your main operating fund, the primary funding source for this is your property tax. And so, your general fund, we're property tax dependent, meaning that we're over 50% or closer to 65% and property tax dependent. Overall, with this budget, we're presenting at the current tax rate. As you can see, revenue and the change in revenue, we expect revenue to increase, this is primarily due to property taxes. Total expenditures, those are increasing as well, our revenue is increasing a little slower than expenditures and we're also creating a transfer out for capital equipment replacement. That's kind of what these big picture changes are, like the summary of it. And overall, our fund balance is at a very strong level. So speaking particularly about revenue, property taxes, as I said, we're presenting at the current tax rates and we see a $491,000 increase. This is primarily due to increased values, 2% of this is new growth and then 5% of this is existing value growth. There's also growth in intergovernmental and charges for service primarily due to increased cost of fire service. So, the cost of fire service goes up, so does the revenue that we have to wash it. And then our interest income has also increased because the market is doing better and the Fed keeps raising that buyback rate. Areas of decrease revenue are license and permit, as we've seen, residential construction is decreasing. Our sales tax budget is decreasing a little bit year over year, but overall, our sales tax receipt collections is going up. And so, this is what we saw was, as development slowed down, we saw one-time revenue kind of drop off. Overall, this hasn't hurt us, we've kind of trued up slowly but surely to the end of the year. And so, this is just us truing up that budget comparatively. We will make more in sales tax revenue than we did last year, it's just our budget number was a bit high the previous year. Franchise fee, we continue to see reductions here due to cord cutting and over the next five years, we really see this trimming down. And so, right now, we're seeing about a 20% decrease year over year. And so, as it gets out here, as this start will start going like this. Miscellaneous revenue and funds and fees decreased $41,000 and that's just changes each year. And so, we kind of budget those level if we get more and then that's one of those places that we recognize them, but we don't overly project our miscellaneous revenue. Expenditures overall, we're going to present in the same categories that you've seen before. Personnel, our primary increase right now, all that we're seeing is through health insurance. So we're going to keep updating this as we go forward. We have a few items that are coming before you on future council agenda items, primarily the healthcare trust, and we'll also be trimming down those rates and seeing what we can do so we can see this, well, most likely, we will see this decrease actually over the next two meetings. Merit increases, this is budgeted the 2% that we've talked about previously, the mud is paying for 15,000 of this. Hotel occupancy expenditures, we're moving expenditures in from the hotel occupancy fund so that we can increase the amount of fund balance that is growing year over year. Mayor, do you have a question?
Yeah, before you leave the slide, you brought up the term healthcare trust?
Yes, sir.
So, would you explain that for everyone?
Yes, sir. Currently, we are paying taxes on healthcare insurance and so if we create a nonprofit healthcare trust, which will be coming forward to the council agenda, we will see a 2% decrease and that will be a dropping off of taxes. And so, under Jonathan's direction and Tom's direction, we've been able to create that and so you'll see that fund and our benefits coming out of that will no longer have to pay taxes, therefore we'll realize those decreases, primarily a 2% decrease. Our TMRs rate changed, it went up a little bit, this is the first time it's happened in about two years. We are now fully staffed and we're no longer seeing vacancy savings included in the budget, so that's not something we're realizing, so we are much more full staffed, we are, we are very, very close to full staffing right now and so we're not factoring in those savings into next year. And vacancies are now budgeted salary midpoints, as we've seen, there's competition now in the market for some positions. And so, instead of budgeting at the low point and being able to hire people at just the entry level, we're budgeting out the midpoint so that we don't short ourselves in being able to recruit employees. Services and supplies, so this was a category that we saw an increase, primarily half of this is because of the 4th of July event, moving that in for the hotel occupancy fund. We're currently evaluating the fund to see if this is something potentially we could shift back. But right now, we're included in the general fund right now. So we'll be looking at this going forward and seeing if this is a expenditure that, and you say there, we can shift partial funding based on how much fund balance is growing. So standard increases throughout departments include water, electricity and fuel. We get some good news on water, I spoke with Stephen over at the mud in the finance department, he says that we're going to see a base rate increase, he believes it's going to be well below 20%. As we receive those numbers in from them, we'll decrease this. So, oh, that's good news for us as a commercial water rate pair. Electricity, that's just a pass on from onshore and that's infrastructure cost and fuel, as we get a little bit closer, we'll trim down these prices. This is too, there was some market volatility at the beginning of the summer, we've seen kind of that level out and we haven't seen any major climbs again, so we're going to evaluate these as well. In our property insurance, we saw a $23,000 increase and this was primarily due to Hurricane Harvey, so most cities pay into the Texas municipal leagues and their insurance and because of all the flood insurance claims that we saw due to the hurricane, we saw the cost of insurance rise. Expenditures, supplemental and equipment replacement, so we moved equipment replacement, that's where you're seeing that proposed FY '19, $251,000, that's a transfer out. Really, it's actually 314 transferred out, but you also have $63,000 of revenue coming in at the same time, so it nets out to be the $251,000 transfer out. Your general fund supplementals, these are the supplemental items that we discussed before and these are included within the budget, we have some recommendations from the finance subcommittee that we'll be going over the next couple meetings. Overall, big picture, we're at a good level, even though we're seeing a net decrease in fund balance, we're at a strong funding level. Overall, the fund balance as a percent of general fund expenditures is 39%, meaning we can operate for currently 150 days. Going forward, if we can create any savings within the general funds, meaning that we can drop this down below the 405, our goal is any drops that we do there, we're going to bump it back up to the 405 and transfer that out to equipment replacement. So our goal is kind of by the end of this budget process to create an additional transfer over so that we can begin to build that balance. Another direction that staff has taken based on the finance subcommittee is to actually transfer any revenue related to PD 30 and permitting fees over to this. And so, based on that, I believe that we can actually build a pretty healthy balance and one year more over the $290,000 we talked about as a 10-year kind of true-up replacement I will say, looking at fund balance over the next three to five years, if we decrease fund balance any more significantly than this, it starts hindering in three years, you're, basically your funds above the 30% fund balance. And so, really, we'll start going against our own policy in about three years. And so, over the next couple of years, we need to look at stabilizing that fund balance number so that the, the, the amount of funding that we have in our general fund stays above that 30% threshold. Other funds, so we briefed you on this pretty recently, so I'm going to go through, there's not many changes through this, capital projects, the state is the same, you heard our presentation on those projects tonight. Whenever those projects go out to bid, we'll get real pricing on those and that will also determine some change in expenditures here. So the bid won't come in until after the beginning of the year, so we believe our budget numbers are sound enough and each year, we've always come in under, so we don't have to worry about spikes in those funds. So, we could actually see these expenditures change through the next year as we receive those bids. This is our five-year capital improvement plan and as you can see, we're, you know, five projects into that and eventually, we're going to start talking about the next few projects in a couple of years. Our debt services fund, again, the main changes are CCPD and the street maintenance sales tax contributions, that's, those are the two decreases in contributions and that's to provide property tax relief to the general fund. Overall, you can still see our debt model at stair stepping down. This really opens us up for availability whenever we have to go issue for the next round of projects. And so, this is putting you guys in a good spot so that we can issue five to seven million dollars in bonds, that next issuance and probably get more project life out of this before you have to go issue debt again.
Before you go forward, can I think, go back two slides? One more. All right, so just want to point out and make sure I understand something there. Under the fiscal year 2018 estimate column.
Yes, sir.
Expenditures line has a negative 536,000. What are you saying there? Are you saying we budgeted 2.9 in 2018 and your estimate is we're going to have 536,000 less expenditures? Or?
No, we have 2.4 million or 2.3 million less than what was budgeted. That's the delay, that's the capital project commencement delay that you're seeing there, right, guys?
Correct, yeah, sorry, I was trying to get where you were actually looking so that I could.
Basically, yeah, you're saying that this year, we will have spent 536 rather than the 2.9 that was forecast because of the delay in the projects.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand, okay. So what you're proposing then in the next year's budget, that you'll spend that?
Correct.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry about that. So our capital equipment replacement fund, right now, we're showing that as a net, so that you're just funding a capital equipment replacement. As over the next couple of meetings, you're going to see this balance start increasing. So that's our goal to find funds to shift over to here. And so, hopefully by the end of this, you start seeing that number grow as we anticipate. Again, we're not going to recognize PD 30 revenues just because PD 30 has always been a giant question mark and so I don't want to ever plan on something being there and that causing a shortfall. And so I don't want to ever plan on something being there and that causing shortfall.
Bet you did. Bet you did for the mud.
That is an intergovernmental issue, yes, sir. It wasn't there to balance my budget, sir. Court security funds. So again, court, court security, court technology, we're seeing both of these, sorry, we're seeing both the court security and court technology funds increase in revenue. We're trying to utilize both of these special revenue funds with the limited uses that the state provides us. Our CCPD fund, the main change here is again, we're shifting $200,000 or we're shifting down the $100,000 contribution to debt service and we're moving over operating expenditures out of general fund here to provide property tax relief. This is a two-year stay and by the time we're moving out hotel occupancy expenditures, we'll move over CCPD. So this won't cause a bounce in expenditures. EDC 4B, again, they funded the parking lot, so this was a major change for them. But they funded the full cost of this project, so we're not having to bear that in any other different funds. Hotel occupancy, again, we're probably need to move expenditures out of there, but we're going to currently keep evaluating this fund and see what changes we can make. Street maintenance sales tax, the only change here was a $25,000 debt service decrease reallocation. And this increased the amount that we're putting towards street maintenance, which is our street panel replacement. Our tourist fund, this is no change from the last presentation that we gave you. Again, it's slowly but surely digging its way out of a negative fund balance. The recreational program fund stayed the same. The Parkland dedication fund has no changes. It is currently at those projects that we discussed. And so as you, as we get more into like the ADA playground and as we accept those price changes, if we do sponsorships, we'll actually include those revenues and everything in here if we can get accurate numbers on what we think those will be. Trophy Club Park, again, that slowly but surely dug its way out of a negative fund balance you've seen in previous years and is starting to grow heavily in fund balance. This is primarily due to the TML insurance claim that we were reimbursed for the flood. The store and drainage utility fund, there is no changes in this fund as presented and from the last time we spoke. Do you have any questions or direction?
John, I appreciate the work and thanks to the committee for working. I will say and I echo, I think, the feeling of the committee and of other council members. Most prepared as presented budget.
Thanks, sir.
We've had in years and very much appreciate the detail and your attention along with Jonathan's attention to what council is saying is direction. I think the exciting thing for me as I see this is, and Tom, Andrew Klass and I had our opportunity to meet with Jonathan and John today, because we missed the meeting that you had, was the fact that you're still looking to refine, you're still working to try to get that better for the tax rate and to help fund that capital improvements or capital development fund, which I'm really excited about. And I think if we can accomplish all of that for this budget, that will be a really good task for us. So I look forward to the next few weeks. And I guess just to reiterate for everyone, Tom, do you want to say or Jonathan or John about kind of the plans for the next two meetings about the budget? Just present that while we're on it?
Sure, Mayor, I'd be happy to. Your next item coming up addresses that as well. Looking forward into the schedule, we've actually got, the near next two meetings, we'll be providing updated budget presentations to you at those meetings. At those meetings also, we would, again, depending on the results of the next item, look to hold our two public hearings on the budget. And with the potential, after the close of the public hearing on September 11th, if council is amenable to the budget, we could look for adoption of the budget on September 11th. Now, with that timeframe, what that does for councils, that gives you the luxury, if you aren't necessarily comfortable at the 11th, then we do have one more opportunity before the 30th without calling a special meeting. So it's really up to your direction and your preference. But we'll be prepared and everything will be in place for that September 11th adoption if council so chooses.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have questions about the presentation or the budget item? Tom, thank you very much for the work everybody has done on your staff to make this happen. And I believe we're going to see some things in the next two presentations that are really going to make us happy about things. Okay. Jonathan, you standing up there for item 14?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So let's move on to item 14. Consider take appropriate action regarding a record vote on a not to exceed fiscal year 2019 ad valorem tax rate and to schedule two public hearings to meet truth in taxation requirements and are required by the charter and related matters. The, I'll recognize Jonathan then, I guess, at this point.
Mayor and council, this item, as we briefly talked about, is to set the not to exceed tax rate and then schedule the two public hearings that I mentioned earlier. One being held for August 28th, which is your next council meeting, and then the following council meeting on September 11th. Our recommendation is to set the not to exceed ad valorem tax rate of .451142 per $100 of valuation. And of that tax rate, .341442 of $100 is for maintenance and operations. And then, as we mentioned earlier, that maintains the 11 cents per $100 to service the town's debt requirements.
All right. At this time, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Rowe for a motion.
I'll make a motion to set a not to exceed rate of .451442 dollars per 100, add valorum tax rate and set two public hearings for Tuesday, August 28th, 2018, and Tuesday, September 11th, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Rowe and a second by Flory. Any questions before we vote? All right, so we have to do a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Eric, I'm sorry.
I had put that on there while you were reading it to make the same motion, so we're all good.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I was looking down.
It's not a problem.
Again, you know, if I had software that dinged at me, I would see it.
We'll just have Greg start dinging it.
Yeah, I can, that sounds like a great idea. I'm in favor of that.
He's going to be way down at the end next.
Even better, you can hit me.
All right.
He's an East Coast guy, you can hear him anywhere.
Okay, so I'm going to start with Alicia. And so you need to say yea or nay or yes or no on the approval of the motion.
Yay.
All right.
Yay.
Eric?
Yes.
Ryland?
Yes.
Greg?
Yay.
And I will say yes. All right, the motion carries with a 5-0 vote. All right, we will move on to item 15. Consider take appropriate action regarding an ordinance amending Article 8.02 noise within the town code of ordinances to amend work allowed on Sundays and provide an effective date. We had some information provided for us and council, just to let you know, we do have someone who came to speak in reference to the item. So Luann, you've been here patiently for a long time. I'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address and go ahead and speak.
Luann, excuse me, I've been sitting there a while. Luann Oldham, 2535 Roseville Drive, Trophy Club. Mayor, city council members, I thank you for bringing this back up again. I've talked to many neighbors and many citizens that are concerned about it. Coming to a town council meeting can be intimidating for some. For me, it used to be my job, so it doesn't bother me that much. I have a little bit of jet lag, so forgive me if I'm not as cohesive as I need to be. I've been spending a lot of time on planes. I noticed looking around while I was waiting tonight for the other agenda items, the way we view ourselves in this community is displayed out in the lobby and it's displayed in here. We value our first responders, we value green space, we value tranquility. I mean, it's everywhere that we've done it. Really, our community is not self-identified as a commercially dense population. We're not urban, we're not even dense suburban. We have done a good job in planning that. We've really created a community that's a respite from this very busy, stressful, traffic, loud environment that we're in by living in the DFW area. We're just, we have an onslaught of ambient noise, which is there all the time. If you want to know how sensitive our citizens are to that type of noise, just think about the sound wall and the push behind that. TC's noise ordinance is what can protect the citizens from seven-day-a-week construction. It gives us a little bit of respite. I'd like to point out that there's two neighborhoods now that are going to be impacted by construction that are or are going to be very soon. And those, of course, are those neighborhoods adjoining the PD, the Bonnall Beck Development. And now the Byron Nelson High School campus development that's going to be going on. Roseville Drive citizens, and you may have heard from some of us, we've got many issues with the noise from the high school. Of course, by location, we expected it. But we get loudspeakers that get amped up and misdirected and need to be rebalanced. And it's not uncommon for me to go out in the backyard and have decibel readings. By the way, I was a technology teacher, so I have pretty good apps on my phone. Decibel readings that are hitting 70, which is right when it starts on the human experience to be quite annoying. There's times when the loudspeakers are unbalanced and they did balance them a couple of years ago, but they've been kind of blind to any requests since then. They drown out our TVs inside the house locked with the doors closed. So as a matter of fact, my husband and I went out because the train is so prevalent over there and we replaced our bedroom windows, which were five years old, with noise reduction windows. So it is, it is ambient noise, it's something we have to live with. But, I'm going to go to my notes here since I'm a little disoriented. Phase one that's coming up on Northwest ISD is going to include putting in a new parking lot and also the athletic facility. And I'm all for the expansion and I'm all for public rights or, you know, the private property rights. I understand that, I also understand very well the not-in-my-backyard theory and I try not to be that way. But we are going to be dealing with some noise on that and probably for a projected time because after phase one is completed and the new parking lots are in and the athletic facility is in, then we're going to go into actually expanding the footprint of the campus with buildings. So this is something that we're not going to be measuring in months, we're going to be measuring in years. The timeline for construction, you know, I don't know if they do have the final timeline for all phases, but I do know that we're looking for quite a time. Also, the Beck development, there have been a lot of complaints. I don't know if you've heard them, I've heard them from those that attend the churches in the area that they're not too crazy about it and also, you know, the abutting property in the neighborhoods there. So actually, what we're looking at and are the timeframes. Yes, we've got to allow construction, how else are we going to run? Monday through Saturday, I understand and what we proposed and what we currently have is great. I noticed that the attachments that we had on the agenda tonight, talking about comparable neighboring communities, it didn't have Westlake in it. So I picked up the phone and I called the director of planning there and visited with them. And he sent me some information and my phone just timed out. But believe it or not, and y'all maybe already researched it, but the town of Westlake does not have a noise ordinance and construction noise as far as the timeframe. They don't have a time set up. What they do have is a decibel level, which this has got to be a typo because he sent me over 49 decibels. And that's, that would be really cool, but you wouldn't get any construction done.
You're not going to be building paper airplanes.
Yeah, but they have a seven to seven. But the part of this that concerns me and what I want to get ahead is there is an area, this is an area we need to address as the town grows because we've gotten many complaints about the hours and the construction noise. So they're starting to look at their noise ordinance also. But not to take up any more of your time, you know what the issues are. You know there are going to be a lot of citizens that are going to be impacted and you know it's going to be long range. What I would like to respectively ask the council to consider is amending the current noise ordinance section 8.02.003, item A6, to strike language allowing Sunday construction within the town limits. That would be my goal. In the alternative, we will negotiate, I'll even throw you a negotiating. I think that if we could limit the allowable hours on Sunday from 12 to 5, give the residents their Sunday morning. Let them not have to listen to back holes and, oh gosh, when they were doing the resurfacing of the ball fields over at Northwest ISD, we heard backup beeps for over a year constantly. You couldn't really go in the backyard without it because every time they rolled over that new surface, they had to beep. So it's loud, it's tiring, we don't get a lot of backyard time in the areas. And if we could reconsider that, due to the complexion of our neighborhoods, which are family-oriented, we're not a large commercial area, we would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Luann. All right, so I have two speakers in the queue. First one is Greg Lamont.
I brought this back. As the reason for placing this originally on our agenda was somewhat vague, I still not fully understand the original intent or need to change the ordinance. There was no outcry or request from residents that I was aware of. In the 14 years that I have been involved in following town politics, I do not recall clamoring for heavy construction on Sundays. There was a mention about the concern that residents wanting to mow their lawns on Sundays would get cited from the town. In section 8.02.004, right below the section that was amended, is a section that was not included in the redlined ordinance in the agenda packet that states that the lawn equipment is an exception to the nuisance ordinance. Now, I realize that that section can be interpreted two different ways. What could have been done was to more clearly define that section as to the days and times of the week to protect the residents, if that was the intent and the concern. From what I understand from some members of the building community, it is difficult and expensive for major construction companies to get workers to even work on a Sunday such as PD 30. We have a small percentage of commercial property. Once those properties are built out in three years or so, heavy construction will be primarily for residential properties such as roof replacement, pool installations and foundation repairs. Which brings me back to my original belief that this change will mainly have an effect on residential properties that would hire smaller local companies to do reconstruction and to be a nuisance to the neighboring residents. This has not been an issue since the town was founded 30 years ago. To me, this change to the ordinance created a problem that did not exist. The idea that Trophy Club has to conform to other towns that have larger percentage of commercial property and still have a significant portion left to be built is unnecessary. Trophy Club can continue to have its own lifestyle. I'll make a motion if everyone wants to speak or I can make a motion now, what do you prefer?
Alicia registered to speak, so it's up to you whether you are going to make it or not. Yell the floor to let her speak?
Yes.
All right, Alicia.
It was my understanding too, the last time we spoke of this, we were talking about, oh goodness, residents are going to get cited for mowing the lawn on a Sunday and oh, how come Trophy Club, Country Club hasn't gotten a ticket yet? Well, now that we're reading the rest of the ordinance that we didn't really talk about last time, it doesn't seem that that's the case, it's allowed. So it was, to me, it seemed like we were trying to protect those homeowners who would like to mow their lawn and the golf courses like to mow their lawn on a Sunday. But in order to do that, we had to allow heavy construction and commercial construction on a Sunday. And then we kind of compromised with backing the hour down to nine o'clock instead of seven. So that's one thing I wanted to, as to Greg's point, clarify. And also to what our citizen here was talking about, you're right, this is a different community than, you know, in Addison or Irving or a highly commercialized community. It's different. So I do agree with the points you made there. with the points you made there, and I think we should consider that as well. And what, into what Greg said, was it a big problem? I mean, did the town, did the staff have an influx of waivers that they had to work through for commercial construction to be performed on a Sunday? I mean, was it so much workload that we have to change the ordinance to allow it, so you're not inundated with all these waivers that you have to provide? Or, I just wanted some clarification on what exactly, how we came to that, now that we've had the rest of the ordinance out that we were able to read. Thanks.
Just real quick, Greg, before you make your motion, is that okay? The motion did pass 5 to 2. So, you did approve the motion. I know Greg and Nick didn't, but just for the record, that's what the vote was, 5 to 2. As I've stated, I did, my reasoning for doing it was for the residents. You'll notice in A7, it does state the operation of a chainsaw within 1,500 linear feet of the occupied residential dwelling, yada, 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 is not allowed. I had to use a chainsaw after that storm, because my neighbor's tree fell into her, nearly fell into her pool. I had to use a chainsaw during hours that this allowed me to use them. I did it on a Sunday because I couldn't get to it after 6 o'clock on Saturday, which the current ordinance only allows me to do. So, yes, let's, let's look at our three options we have here. Option number one, we should turn a blind eye to somebody disobeying the law. Option number two, we should make them follow the law. Option number three, we should change the ordinance. I voted to change the ordinance. I think we have a good ordinance now. The change has not been into effect very long, and if in six months, we actually see that construction on Sundays is causing a problem, I'm all for it. Right now, I'm not for changing it. It's not a, it's not any way of saying disrespect to you, but I'd like to, let's give it some time. If we have a problem, yeah, I could see changing it. Right now, I think we need to give it some time, because I know 100%, the only construction that has happened on a Sunday since this ordinance was changed was me using a chainsaw and the lake's wall being worked on on a Sunday, which before this ordinance would not have been allowed. So, that's what I got.
All right, thank you, Eric. So, Greg?
I don't know about working on Sunday, but as far as the chainsaw, we just amend that particular part of the ordinance rather than change the whole ordinance. So, I'll make a motion to remove in section 8.02.003 Declaration of Nuisances, numbers 6, 7, and 8, that allows construction on Sundays from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and add to number 9, be Monday through Saturday inclusive or between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Sunday. So, it's removing...
So, by adding to 9, you're doing, you're adding just allow or disallow?
Well, that's the town manager. Hold on a second.
I'm sorry?
On section, let me get my glasses on for this one.
I'm not quite sure what that's, what you're doing there. Add to 9, the hours of 9 to 5 Sunday.
I apologize. Remove.
Okay. All right, so you were saying...
No, we're basically removing Sunday construction, and I just wanted to make sure we covered all the different numbers.
All right, so do I have a second?
Do we speak after? I just want to clarify something he said.
Do you have a question? Well, we have to see if we get a second before we discuss.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, so Alicia seconds. All right, do you have a question, Alicia?
A chainsaw, would that be lawn equipment? I don't see that, I don't find that as heavy equipment. Doesn't it already say lawn equipment?
It's explicitly prohibited.
Okay.
Or it was in the ordinance.
So, I love when Eric always reminds me how I vote on something and then change my mind after I've come across additional information, but I'm a woman, I'm allowed to change my mind. I got more information, you know? A part of this ordinance was left out when we were discussing this last time. It was brought to, to our attention. So, yeah, I'm further researching the topic, because more information has come to light. And to kind of go with what you were saying, Eric, you don't see a problem why change it. Well, was there a problem beforehand? Why not just change the one problem you had beforehand, which was a resident carrying, you know, for their lawn and a chainsaw on a Sunday, instead of adding heavy equipment construction on a Sunday? So, we could use that argument to go back to say, okay, well, let's just change this one little area in the already existing ordinance, instead of adding a whole new day and a whole new realm of equipment.
All right, and so I just want to make a comment. Eric had a comment about emphatically saying that there'd only been X complaints about certain construction.
No, not complaints.
Just construction on Sunday?
No, no, I was just talking about, I did work.
You did work.
And there was work done on the wall during time previously wasn't allowed until these ordinance was changed.
Okay. Well, I understood you to say that was all, but there were, there was work done in Hogan's Glen and the Villas on the first Sunday after it was passed, and two residents who were adjacent to that construction complained. My thought about that was, that development is gonna end up in six months and not have any homes left to build. So, I'm a, I'm, I was saying for some time now that, give it some time, see what happens, see if we have had any positive or negative effect on it, was kind of my point for the last few weeks, but I just wanted to correct that. So, Greg?
Yeah, just as far as the wall, I would consider that under an emergency situation, and I think the town manager could have approved that. Whether he did or not, I don't know, but that was an emergency situation.
All right.
Bad example.
Any other, or comments? One in the queue? Are you ready to vote? So, we have a motion by Greg, seconded by Flurry, remove from 8.02.003, I think you're saying items 6, 7, and 8?
Yes.
Is that right? And then, remove from item 9, the reference to 9 to 5 on Sunday.
Right.
Is that clear? Because I don't have that in front of me, so I just want to make sure we understand exactly what we're changing.
Take our time.
Are you?
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, that's why I said we had, we have to add that back in.
That's what you said first, and then when I questioned you, you said remove.
Yeah, exactly.
Which is it?
So, we have to take out the, we can give the, hold on a second.
The original motion said 8.02.03, 6, 7, and 8, remove.
Right, because now it stays that perform between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. So, give me a clarification on that one.
Which paragraph is that? 9B?
It's not 9B, it's just B. It's just B.
So, the original ordinance, before it was changed, said Monday through Saturday inclusive or between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Sunday. So, are you, is it saying that the town manager can allow on Sunday? Just want to clarify that. If we leave it as is? So, in effect, if somebody had an emergency on a Sunday, the town manager could approve construction on a Sunday? So, I need to change mine to take that Monday through Saturday inclusive out? Okay, so my apologies.
All right.
Back to the original.
I think we're talking about 6, 7, and 8.
Yes.
All right, but the motion was, in fact, to remove 9. Where, reference 9 to 5 Sunday. So, that's in era. So, what I'm gonna do is go back and say, Greg, if you want to change your motion, and Alicia agree, we can do that, or you can make a motion to amend your motion.
No.
Just change.
Just change, and I apologize to the council for that.
So, your motion then is just to remove from 8.02.03, paragraph, or number 6, 7, and 8?
Correct. Oh, no, not removing the whole section, just to allow on Sunday, not to allow on Sundays. It goes back to the original ordinance.
Okay. All right, so Alicia, do you understand the motion?
Yes.
Anybody have a question about the motion? So, the mover and the second have agreed to modify the motion to be remove the reference to Sunday in 8.02.03, paragraph 6, 7, and 8. Let's make sure we're right. Yes? Right. Everybody clear on that? All right, so we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion as modified and agreed by the second, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. So, we have Rowe and Jensen opposed, so the vote is 3 to 2. The motion fails. All right. We are down to item 16, discussion of items for future agenda to include items consideration for the August 28th agenda. So, council, I'll call your attention to page 222 of the packet. Item 6, I was gonna call that attention, but we had a brief comment about it that Jonathan made. I just wanted to point out that that is coming before us in the next agenda. It is currently on consent. If you would prefer that that's not on consent, please state. And of course, the problem is you don't have, you have two council members who haven't heard this, so.
Yeah, they weren't, yeah, that's true.
So...
Well, one is known for pulling things, so.
Pull it anytime he wants.
Yeah, all right, well, anyway. All right, so anybody else have anything about the August 28th agenda, other than, Tom, we added...
Yeah.
The traffic report of things, and wasn't it also the... The playground, right?
Hopefully.
If we have the information about the playground. So, those are the two items that would go on our 28th agenda that we, one of which we tabled, and it would come back. The other one, we just commented. All right. What about on future agenda pages 225 and 226? We added a number of things recently, but I don't have any changes. I don't know if y'all looked at anything or not.
I was literally just about to ask you guys. Eric, you put it on.
I thought we were wanting a policy about it.
Do we want a written policy?
Wasn't that what you wanted, Eric? A policy about use of it, or not?
I don't recall. Give me a second here.
You'll get over it.
It'll come back.
That's funny.
Always do.
All right, yeah, I think we do. We need to have some, we need to have a policy discussion within council about how we use those plans.
So, so why don't you modify that, Holly, to say regarding development of Parkland Dedication Fund policy? So that we don't ask the same question again?
Yes, sir. Good point.
Anybody else? Okay. Where are we? All right, so we're gonna go to item 17, which will send us into executive session as soon as I read this. Pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter 551, Texas Department of Miniac, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, 551071, consultation with attorney with items breach of contract and Loop Road. Item B, 551072, deliberation regarding real property, the property north of Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive. It is 9:27, and we are in executive session. All right. Council will come to order. It is 10:51, and we have reconvened into regular session.
No, sir, it's not.
Oh, 9:51, thank you.
Close. 9:56.
Oh, I can't even...
It's quite all right, sir. It's right there on your iPad. It's really cool.
Okay, it's 9:56, and we have reconvened into regular session. Item 18, consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Does anybody have any action? Hearing none. We will stand adjourned at 9:57.